Our regularly scheduled meeting of July 13th is in session. Phil Sernanek will not be here, I believe.
He is not.
And Debbie Brinkman also will not be here tonight. You have the agenda in front of you, are there any changes? Seems none, then it's approved, it's submitted. First item on the agenda is a pre-budget presentation by the Fire Department.
Yeah, and counsel, before I bring Chief Mullin up to the table, there's just a couple of comments I wanted to make. First, I wanted to point out, I think if you had a chance to look at the packet, there were the spreadsheet that had the 3 percent cut goals, there is an error in that spreadsheet, and it's the budget team and myself dropped the ball, I'm sorry, Mr. Stallman, if you find, yes sir, that one right there. The chief and his team had submitted to this information to us more than a week or 10 days ago, but we just through an oversight, the 92,000 under EMS QA QI, where it says 92,519, that is not because we did not realize, or maybe I dropped the ball, I didn't realize that that was, 75 percent of that is funded out of the EMS transport fund, the Tabor Fund.
Okay.
So we don't get any true corresponding cut in the general fund, if you remember, these cuts are all aimed toward the general fund. So Chief Mullin was advised of this, he has had a chance to talk with his division chiefs, and again, they feel like before we submit the draft budget to you and for your September hearings, they will find an additional $92,000 in proposed cuts to submit to you, but that's a dropping the ball on my part and the budget team's part, not Chief Mullin, because he had submitted this information to us. So anyway, so we'll have to work with them to make that up. And secondly, as in previous pre-budget meetings, we've sent you an awful lot of background material, statistical data, Chief Mullin's come to the table, I think, just to reintroduce, Doug Ireland, who's our Support Services Chief, Roland Sino, who's our Operations Chief, Randy Glanville, who does a lot of our data analysis, analytical analysis, and then Jim Hofstra, who's our Plans Inspection and Fire Inspection Chief, so the whole team is here tonight. I think with Chief Mullin, if you've got questions about programs, stats, so we did, we're able to send you the 2009 fire report, which had a lot of backup data in it, but really kind of up to you as to where and how you'd like to pursue this, rather than us kind of regurgitating what we've already sent to you. So Chief, did you have any other preliminary comments that you wanted to make?
No, sir, just happy to be here.
Okay, so Mayor, if that's okay, I mean, we've got the whole team here, we sent you a lot of backup support material, again, just to reiterate, this is pre-budget, this is not the budget, they do all have instructions to submit a 3 percent cut for the first go around, those may not all be the same, but we're going to start, they're going to start meeting with the budget team tomorrow, we start with all the departments, but this at least gives you a snapshot of their thinking, gives you an opportunity to have a dialogue. We've had some other issues where council members are going to say, when you come to us in September, I'm going to want to know more about this, count me lukewarm or whatever, and that's very helpful feedback for us. So with that, I think we'll just open it up to the council for anything, yes ma'am?
I have a general question.
Yes, ma'am.
We're going to get the June budget reports this week in our packets, I believe, but you've seen them already?
The revenue, the June revenue, I believe Eric will have those prepared for you. I saw a draft, and they were still tweaking it into a quality issue, but they should be able to go in the Thursday packets, do you think so, Doug?
Yeah, we might make the Thursday packet, it's going to be ready in the next few days.
Okay.
Then that will also be the second quarter data.
Yes, ma'am.
So are we still comfortable with the 3 percent cut right now? Okay, so we're keeping a close-
It doesn't like being put on the spot.
No, I'm sorry, so we're keeping a mighty close eye on it then?
Comfortable is relative. I don't know the answer to that yet, I think we will be looking very closely at just that question, are we comfortable with the 3 percent, does it look, or does it need to be?
So the department heads will potentially, potentially, they should potentially be looking at a tad more.
We, yes ma'am, when we, in fact, they have been told when they come in for their individual budget sessions, that we may ask you if we need more, be prepared to answer that question, so.
Okay, and that's quite apart from the potential impact of the ballot initiatives if they pass.
Yes, ma'am, totally different, so we have not settled in, it's not a cut and dried 3 percent in the story.
Okay, I just, it's just that we keep-
We may say, you need to put some more on the table, yes ma'am.
That's fine, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So questions, open it up for Chief Mullin or any of his team, and us also, obviously we have Doug Farman and Erleene Gladon and Tiffany Hooton from the Finance Budget Team here, so all of the staff resources are here for you. Yes, sir?
No, I was, oh.
Oh, I'm just waiting for questions.
I'm just thinking, will this be the shortest presentation?
Hey, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Chief, maybe you could just contextualize, I mean, there's a lot of, as Jim mentioned, there's a lot of information in here, maybe you could walk us through it, just, you know, high level philosophically, where you see, where you see what you see as being the areas that are prioritized in here as far as cuts. I mean, I guess one of the questions I had with the list of items that was on page five, as far as sort of where you were cutting, I don't want to just focus directly on that, but is this more or less in order of priority? Is this the kind of thing where you're sort of saying, well, TEMS is our highest priority if we have to, or maybe the other way to say it is quote-unquote lowest priority if we had to do a scale back kind of thing, I mean, what's, how are you guys approaching it philosophically?
And that's a great question, actually, this isn't in any kind of ranking that we put together. When we were trying to address this, of course, we take our core values, our core mission, and that is when somebody picks up the phone and calls 911 and wants us to help, we need to be there, and we worked back from that. We relied pretty heavily on the OEC study that just came out also, as far as looking what they were evaluating, as far as what we needed to improve, what we needed to cut back on, and that blended into this document also. So what we tried to do is minimize the impact on our citizens while making this 3 percent cut. Is that pretty close, Bruce?
Okay.
Thank you.
So before, maybe some big questions, on page six, the cadet position.
Yes, ma'am.
You and I chatted a little bit about this today, but for the public record, the elimination of the fire cadet position, which has been vacant since July 2008, so how is that a cut, if the position's vacant?
I'm thinking there was a difference between not filling it until we had the money and making a permanent cut, which this feels to be.
There's, they, the department heads are also allowed to transfer money between line items within a budget as they think is appropriate, and so what happens with some of these unfilled positions is sometimes the salaries that aren't being spent because the position is unfilled, but the position is authorized, is then transferred and used for something else.
Well-
So it's kind of a-
Yeah, but I guess part of my issue then, I mean, number one, it's kind of like truth in advertising, but number two, what is it then that will disappear, won't get funded or funded as much, since?
Well, that 45,000 will not be appropriated in the 2011 budget.
Yeah, but it's being spent now on something, so what's it being spent now?
It may or may not be spent.
Oh, it's not?
It may or may not.
Right.
It's not being spent?
Not necessarily, I think what the mayor was saying, it potentially could be spent because it's appropriated, but it's not, right now, it is not being targeted to be spent for anything, so.
But you're asking a good question, because-
No, so let me see if I can stumble into what I was trying to get at.
Sure.
Because you always, you always hear the much clearer way of saying it, but-
He thinks.
Well, I think so, I mean, a lot of times.
I'm teasing, I'm teasing.
Lucky you have the five later.
The people at this end of the table both-
Teasing the mayor.
Really well, so it's not really a cut. It's like if I have some savings, and I also have my budget of what I intend to spend this year, so if I'm not really spending money this year, it's not a cut to cut my savings.
Well, let me phrase it another way, because we've had this discussion about some other areas such as fuel, and you know, when we budget a certain amount of money for fuel, and if you look at the five-year model, which is just a projection model that Doug and now Mr. Stallman put together, those are based on projections, or budget projections, so think budget, and then think cuts, and then think actual, okay? So in this instance, that 40, this 45,000 is budgeted, it's appropriated, so that number-
So we're just cutting the appropriation?
We're cutting the appropriation, but the chief is making an important point here, because the idea here is that these are not temporary, these are permanent, so for example, some departments have said, well, excuse me, and I don't know what the real number is, Tiffany or Erleene probably does, but let's just say, excuse me, my fuel costs are going to be 10 percent under what was budgeted this year, I want that, I want to count some of that for my 3 percent cut, and we've said, no, because under this scenario, these are permanent, we don't, unless, you know, unless the model dramatically changes, but under the structural deficit model, the intent is that these won't come back unless there's, you know, so they have to, this is a shrinking, if they're not coming back in the 2011 budget, either in personnel or in some other manifestation, so that's the cuts.
Okay, but let me comment it from a slightly different angle.
Sure.
Because I have to hear it from different perspectives. So if a department is using, is needing to use all of the money that was allocated this year, they didn't really have maybe some slack, the same slack, so when they're being asked to cut 3 percent, it sounds to me like they may be giving up a little skin, and some others aren't really going to be feeling the hurt.
That's-
And that's not-
Possible, yeah, you know, that probably impacts, and I'll just give you an example, Public Services, they've got about, I think they still have four or five frozen positions, but Charlie has some of those positions targeted for 2011, I'm trying to think of somebody else, IS, which has a frozen position. Now, you haven't seen IS's proposal yet, but he's going to be able to meet his 3 percent without having to, what I'll say, sacrifice, throw an extra skin on the table, so there could be a situation where there's some inequity, I think right now, I'm not aware of any gross inequities, but we should be ready to explain that to you or talk about it if that comes to you.
As long as you guys are on top of that, I just-
Yeah, no, no, we're very aware of that, of that instance, and we've got a couple where we've said, and just as we talked about with P, with Public Services, with the streetlight numbers, and I think I acknowledge right up front that in fact, PS was getting dinged a little bit extra because we were holding them accountable for that, but in some ways, it's kind of like, what are the cards you have to play? In this instance, just by happenstance, because he had some people leave, Charlie had more frozen positions, I mean, it's sort of the luck of the draw, we had more skin, if you will, in the game in PS than maybe a smaller department like IS, it only has 10 people.
So that goes back to my request, what, about six weeks ago, that later this summer, you'll share with us some possible other ways to make some cuts rather than the 3 percent across?
Yes, ma'am, and that, yes, and that's a very good point, because there's no, we don't need to, mean to imply that the only scenario you're going to see in September is just this 3 percent, we had to start somewhere.
Yeah.
We know we need to be, we know the structural deficit estimate is around a million to a million four, that's the target, this was one way to get there, we could show you some other scenarios, there could be other scenarios of cross-the-board wage cuts, there could be furloughs, there could be other kinds of things, this is just to say, we have a way to get there, this is one scenario, and to see what kind of issues you had.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And on that same page, Chief, I did send an email that all of council and Mr. Woods got today, and Mr. Farman, with a list of several questions, and you responded to all but one of them. On page six, there's Support Services Division line item reductions, three of those bullets are radio maintenance, other equipment maintenance, and station maintenance, and I want to know what the long-term impact would be, because if you don't do maintenance, I don't know how, what kind of maintenance might suffer, and then how much that might potentially cost us more in the long run.
Just a clarification, Councilmember Cole, and that is, when we talk about maintenance being targeted, we aren't eliminating maintenance, we're certainly cutting back. I think, like you think, it would be a disaster to stop maintaining any of our equipment, but there is a way that we feel, under this situation, we can start paring back on our maintenance and still retain the usefulness of that equipment, and I'm thinking what I'll do is have Doug Ireland, our Support Services guru, come up here and get a little more in-depth into the radio maintenance and those kind of things.
And while Chief Ireland's coming to the table, let me just make one other point for the record, in terms of coming to you with the 2011 budget, and this is kind of for people who might be watching, but for Fire, the council certainly knows, their budget's going to be more complicated because we have to sit down with our partners. So again, we met with them in April, I can't, April, and kind of gave them a preview, they will, Mr. Nolan and Ms. Hathaway, who are now the paid managers of the districts, will be sitting in with us next week when we go over the Fire budget, but certainly, and again, in trying to find a way to meet our, what we think our structural deficit's going to be, Fire, the Fire budget is a little more complicated because we have to have some buy-in and negotiation with our contract partners, so that's even a little extra layer of complexity for the Fire Department. Thank you. Chief Ireland?
To address the issue with the radio maintenance, the radio equipment that we're currently utilizing was purchased off a grant in 2005, our extended warranties expired in 2008. What we're seeing is a higher increase in our maintenance cost for the repair on those radios. Part of that radio maintenance budget also included the replacement of our VHF, which is our backup radio system, new equipment to equip the apparatus, and we have completed those purchases in 2008 and 2009. We're still going to be maintaining radios, we're just working with different vendors who have a better cost schedule than working directly with Motorola, so we have got other Motorola authorized service centers here in town that are giving us better pricing, so we're looking to make use of that. We're also looking at using aftermarket batteries versus Motorola batteries, and there is some cost savings in doing that.
Okay, so it's just the savings rather than the reduction in actual beats there?
That's correct, based on the radios, that is an absolute necessity because of the safety of the personnel, so that is something that we definitely have to address, we feel we've just found some ways to build in some cost savings into that account.
Okay.
Station maintenance, again, we're still going to be doing station maintenance, with the City of Littleton building maintenance personnel, we have got a liaison, so there's a maintenance technician assigned in all the fire stations, so they're in the stations every week, so what we're hoping to do is more preventative maintenance, so we can address issues before there's some type of failure, and then we don't have to pay the increased cost after that failure happens. And then just getting back to the other equipment maintenance, again, it's going to be finding other vendors to give us better cost breaks on the purchases of some of the equipment that we're buying, some of the replacement parts that we're buying.
Thank you.
I was actually just going to clarify what you and Mr. Woods were talking about when Peggy was talking about the Fire Cadet, and put it in more simplified terms as I understand it, but I think it's satisfied now.
Okay, well, I, go ahead. I'd like to tag on to Peggy's thing, and you know, there's a actual revenue versus actual expenditures, and there's the budgeted expenditures versus budgeted revenue, and the more important of the two relationships is the actual expenditures versus actual revenue, but to get to that, you have to budget yourself to where you're not in a deficit condition or spending more than what you're anticipating revenue to come in. So in the council budget, for instance, we have something like $36,000 for training, we routinely spend $20,000 for training, so we're cutting that line item by $16,000 approximately. That will reduce the budgeted expenditures versus budgeted revenues, but it won't reduce the actual expenditures versus the actual revenue, because it's not money that we actually spent, it's not a real cut, it's a budget cut, but we have to do both.
Well, and the distinction is, if it's not appropriated, it can't be spent.
Yes.
So, I mean, part of this is going to be with a $48 million general fund budget, and as Doug knows, having been on, and Mr. Taylor and Jose having been at previous councils, you know, those are always moving targets about where the actuals are going to end up, but if we start to shrink appropriated money, and we're making a commitment that says we're headed, we're addressing the structural deficit, the numbers, the actual numbers will end up being different, but the direction should be the way we want to go.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
So Fire Department may have a position that hasn't been filled in a year or two, cutting that does reduce the budgeted expenditures versus budgeted revenue, which is what we're trying to get to. They may or may not have spent some of that salary, and I don't know, some departments, some divisions have for different reasons, some have not. If they have, then that will affect the actual expenditures versus actual revenue, but if the actuals we're really trying to get to, but to get to that, we have to go through the budget, because that's what's authorized to be spent.
And we just need to keep in mind that we're dealing with the 2010 budget, and we've asked for a 3 percent cut on that budget, and so if you eliminate a line item in there that's not being spent, as part of that 3 percent, you're meeting the goal that was set out by Mr. Woods to the departments, is reduced by 3 percent, because it's a reduction off of the budgeted amount for 2010.
Now, I have something else, too. I don't know if I should say this, when I'm not driving and instead walking, but I'll take a risk here, I'm not really understanding why we keep referring to positions that were cut several years ago. If we're getting by without them, and the economy, sure, the devil doesn't look like it's going to get real exciting in a positive way, I don't know why we just don't bury those positions, and then when we ever start getting more money, then have different people say, okay, now I have this need, and then consider it, adding it at that point, it's kind of like looking at the folks that unfortunately died in the past few years, and sort of having them at the table, and they aren't, so.
Okay, well, I'll implement a word search in the 2011 document that will delete any reference to past positions. How about that?
Anyway, you guys do a darn good job with the folks you have, and I know we sure would like to have a few more, but-
Yeah, I think to some extent, Peggy, that's sort of institutional, because some of those positions, when we cut those back in 2005, there was an anticipation at that time that they were going to come back.
Yeah.
So I think there's sort of a, you know, kind of an institutional memory that gets-
It's hard to-
Now that we're maybe facing, I keep hearing the term, the new normal, you know, this sort of this downsized version of, from the federal government on down, and so maybe it is time to drop that institutional, those institutional references back to 2005 when we froze or, you know, tie up those.
I think, you know, if you do that, that's great, I think having them in the conversation makes it more difficult to look at a request that maybe somebody really needs to fill, because technology has changed and they need somebody to, this sounds silly, that you might need more people with technology, but sometimes you do, so as maybe some new need comes forth- So as maybe some new need comes forth, it's almost like it might have to compete with all these others that we've been getting along without. So, anyway, I appreciate your looking into that.
Minor clarification since we're talking about this. There, in '05, and Tiffany will verify this with me, right Tiffany? That we didn't cut the position, in other words, positions, the FTE is still in the department. The funding for it has gone away. Part of that theory is that if you keep the FTE and you can find the money later on, then you got half your, you know, what you need already in place. Now, as Jim said, we don't disagree with that, and I think we do want to go back and look at the '05 numbers and look at those FTEs that don't have any salary but the position is still there. The other, what we're currently in, is people have frozen positions, whether it be '08, '09. Looking at a position, especially now when it becomes vacant, we think, okay, hang on, timeout, let's freeze that position, let's look at other ways of doing that job temporarily until, because we knew this, something was coming, either structural or the ballot issues. So I think because of that, we found some areas where, well, we could get by with distributing network, possibly. Or technology, because we did some efficiencies, looking at, you know, this technology might be able to fit that. So think of it as, '05 was positions that were frozen, but, and the money has gone away, but the FTE is still there. And we can certainly get rid of that, those positions if we need to, and reduce the FTEs. It's the current ones right now that...
Yeah, no, that's okay. I just, I just...
That's where we're at. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
To everybody?
First?
Peggy, what are you doing?
No, go ahead.
Chief, let me ask a couple of questions, just sort of, again, I think as much to provide sort of just a philosophical connection, or I guess give you some sense of some stuff that I think is interesting in here. On the first page, you've got your organizational values, and under innovation, you're talking here about creating an environment where creativity and risk-taking is supported. And I understand risk-taking in that context is seeking out new ideas, not physical risks or in terms of the service. New solutions are rewarded and where we learn from our mistakes. I think that's very important for all the departments, not just Littleton Fire Rescue. Can you talk a little bit about, and I guess the feedback I would give you is, I'm very supportive of that, and I'd like to see, get some sense from you guys when you come back in, in September, as to what creative types of ideas you guys are coming up with, or how you're, what solutions, what new solutions have been identified and how those are being rewarded? I mean, what are your thoughts in that regard?
I can come up with a couple of examples right now.
Sure.
I think we've seen a dramatic decrease in overtime here in the FIRE department. That is a direct result of having my staff and a brain trust of company officers get together and try to figure out better ways of doing things, better ways to train, better ways to staff. I think that's a direct result of them getting together and hashing out different ideas and pushing the envelope in order to achieve better results.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So that's one part. The other part are some of the innovations that we've brought forward in talking with the hospital, or talking with Denver Cardiology, and coming up with the coolers that you saw just a little while ago, that has a, will have a dramatic impact on the patients that we see. And that came about because of people getting together and talking and coming up with better ways of doing things. So, and I'll bring you a list when we get back together in September, but...
Well, yeah, that'd be terrific. And I guess in terms of people coming up with those ideas, what does new solutions are rewarded mean? I mean, is there some sort of recognition that people are able to receive, to acknowledge their contribution in terms of creating some alternatives or doing things, I don't know, better, faster, smarter, that kind of thing? Is it financial? What, how do you guys, how do you guys address that issue?
We do try to recognize formally and informally. The former, the formal recognition is along the lines of our annual award dinner that we gather together and recognize these folks that have gone above and beyond, that their service has contributed greatly to the way we do business. So that's what we recognize them for.
Well, I think just from a, I think this is really integral, and this, as Jim said, in the, if this is a new normal, then there's a real premium on that kind of thinking in terms of what are creative solutions? If somebody, because this is the hard part. I mean, it's tough for us, it's tough for you guys sitting at a senior management level to know what people in, as much in the field really are seeing. If somebody's got an idea, encouraging them to step up and figure out how to make something happen is really maybe doubly important in this day and age relative to even what it was a few years ago. Same sort of issue in terms of the managing resources wisely and efficiently, and this is sort of the holy grail of any management endeavor. What, you guys have a variety of metrics that you use, and where do you see opportunities or applications to do, to reconstruct or reconstitute resources that would get more efficiency out of the existing base? I mean, I don't know, you don't have to necessarily answer that question right now, but that, those two elements, coming back into the budget, you know, it's, that's part and parcel of the whole thing. If you can come back in the fall and basically say, you know, here's what we're doing to utilize the resources more effectively at no incremental cost, I think that's huge. Go ahead.
Well, if I don't say it right now, I'll forget about it.
That's good.
So a couple of things. One is, of course, as Councilmember McColl and I just had the conversation this afternoon, and it's how we deliver our training. As you probably know, right now, the way we deliver a lot of our training is everybody travels to Station 12, which is our big classroom, and that costs money. The fuel price is going up, that costs money. And so we rotate in, to get every troop in front of the instructor for an hour and a half. It takes eight to 10 hours of pretty constant travel as those crews come into Station 12, and we have to rotate other crews out there to cover their position. So one of the ways that we are looking to change that around is to have some kind of a teleconferencing that, and we've talked into several vendors, Phil Cortez has led the charge on this, that I think will not only reduce, well, will reduce the cost of fuel, but will also make us more efficient, that we will be able to get into more training, not less, because the way we are delivering it, that's one of them.
And I noticed, I was actually going to ask about that under page five, you got elimination of Medic 10, but it talks about the teleconferencing system. Are we, are, are you talking about webinars?
That is correct. Similar to webinars, talking about two-way communication, talking about setting up a studio, a mini-studio there at Station 12, using a lot of our infrastructure that we have right now, and that instructor being able to talk, to present to every one of our eight stations at the same time with a two-way communication.
Absolutely. Is that something, would it be, is there any upside from approaching the Rappel Community College, for example, to see if they've either got resources or the interest in, I mean, I would think there, some of their technical curriculum might lend itself to that sort of an application.
Certainly might.
Okay.
They'd have to get past Ken Price, though.
Well, firewalls being what they are, but that's why you've got the FIRE department. Well, actually, mentioning Ken Price, but actually, I think a lot of council members know that he was one of the driving forces in getting our INET installed, and that was a partnership with Littleton Public Schools. And that is actually part of the invested base. The reason why this teleconferencing now makes some economic sense is because at that point in time, Ken and Kelly really pushed us to negotiate that INET with Comcast, whatever the predecessor of Comcast was. But, you know, that's part of that evolving, looking at adapting to technology, and now we have the technological tools to do that. That's, just that jogs memory of prior discussions as well. We've got, maybe, I mean, would some of the peg fees that were floating around out there be available for some of the equipment side of this, or did they change what we could spend peg fees on? I don't know. Kelly's our ace on, I don't know. Doug, do you know?
I think it's, yeah, capital-related items, but I don't know if they've expanded that.
That bill was introduced in Congress, but it wasn't, has not passed yet, to my understanding.
Okay, I remember.
This is very narrow of a scope, so we've got to be careful. But I will say that on this topic, you know, when John brought it forward, and Jim and I go get a team, him and Ken got together, it is something we should be doing, it makes someone, not just for FIRE.
Now, I agree.
We have other ideas going down the line on how we could use this to market even BIA and their seminars and doing webinars, and, but we got to start first with FIRE. So it was good that John had brought this forward and...
I think it's all the way around. Again, just from a feedback standpoint, I think it's very interesting.
I want to tag on to what John was just talking about on teleconferencing. Because of the service that the FIRE department provides, and you're in the middle of a teleconference, is all of this being videotaped so that when a unit has to leave to go out on an emergency, they can't be present there for the education, that they can catch up on that at a later date?
I think that's what the laptops and the trucks are for.
That was a joke.
And so we're putting laptops for every employee in our budget?
Go ahead.
Yes, sir, it'll be taped so they can see it at a later time. You bet. Thanks.
Peggy? Well, I, whoops, I'm sorry. So I can piggyback a little bit on what you were saying. I talked to the chief about this today, too, and I'd still like to encourage looking into online instruction. And that has the same advantage that if you get called out to put out a fire or whatever, you can go back and look at what you're doing, you know, on your own, you know, in whatever time you want. But if the programs are put together well, and perhaps since, if you do talk to ACC, maybe there's a way to connect to their online service, and maybe they can host, I don't know how to say this, but anyway, they might be able to help with the technology on this, the providing of it. But you could put together programs that could be marketed to FIRE departments around the country if you're online, and people could sign up for courses, kind of like adult education courses or credit-bearing courses if they, if they could be accredited.
That same thing was what we thought with BIA.
I think there's more flexibility in that approach than in the other one, but that's up to you all to look into and look at that. But I, if you're putting together the kinds of instruction that you're talking about, there's a huge market, I would think, for that.
We've got to explore everything, but we got to start somewhere.
Yeah.
And first part was, you know, just having Dr. Eby give, the thing that's so cool about this, this is live. So Dr. Eby stays in his office or in our studio, and the stations stay where they are, and he says, okay, let's show you a new way of procedure. Camera focuses in on Station 16, blah, blah, blah. You look at, Dr. Eby looks and goes, it's good to me. Okay, let's go to the next station. Another screen pops up. That's the, that's the thing that really sold us, because now you've got live back-and-forth interaction, which is really cool to have. The other stuff, we can sort of, kind of do that now, but this is going to even make it much more HD sort of kind of thing. It's got to be much more marketable also. So baby steps first, and like I said, John brought it forward, and we said, go forth and figure it out, and he's been doing that with Ken. All options are on the table, Peggy, and it's a good idea.
I still think there's going to be the greatest things in sliced bread.
Well, Italian sliced bread.
So just one more comment on that. I, you know, we know in medical services, for example, you know, it's very difficult to get the training or respond to needs in rural areas. There are rural areas all over the country that could potentially benefit from the things that you all are thinking of.
Well, the team that we put together, also, we've incorporated, since I got here, there's a gentleman named Chip White in 3SI who helped us through all the INET stuff. And Chip was with, was part of the technology guru for Avada back then, and he still is. Right now, he's working with the state in doing what exactly you're talking about, in looking at what they're going to do for rural areas. But again, using him to get us what we want, he's also plugged into what the college is doing. We're right with what you're saying.
We're still in the concept stage.
Yeah, I just, so I'm just...
As you know, from concept to reality, this will get scrubbed, and as the council well knows, I have my closet full of wet blankets next to my office, and so sometimes they, I drag them out, and then they all have to, they have to dry out those wet blankets before it gets presented to you.
Bruce will want you to hose them down, Ben.
That's right. But in concept, we'll be looking at it. We're, I think that they're trying to set up some field trips for us to see actually a live, in-place systems, but we'll have it, it'll be a lot more fleshed out if we present it to you in the 2011 budget.
Thank you.
First?
What, the canine, arson and explosive canine, is, do we have a dog now, or do we use?
Yes, we do.
We do have a dog? Okay. Maybe I wasn't aware of that. What, and the, who's responsible for the care and feeding, if you will?
Rick Young.
So like a police dog is what it is? Okay.
No, it's a fire dog.
Well, it's the same, yeah, you're right.
Thank you, man.
It's a subtle difference.
I hope you don't call 911 in town soon.
Send the bloodhound.
You better call the police side if you do.
Exactly. No, I understand. Okay. But it's, and essentially, do, does our hound get utilized by other departments in the vicinity, or is it strictly just Littleton, or?
I believe that that dog has gone into the other counties, all through Jefferson County, Rappel County.
So there aren't very many of them around?
No, there's not.
Okay, okay.
Please tell me it's a Dalmatian.
No, not a Dalmatian.
Better be a bloodhound.
I'm curious, since you mentioned the dog, how often is the dog used here and/or elsewhere?
I think what I'll do is bring up our fire marshal, Jim Hoster, who has that information.
Counsel, the canine is used in actuality about 50% for explosives and doing work with the police department, and about half of it is spent with the FIRE department doing, with arson investigation. Last year, it was at two fire investigations, checking for accelerants. Now, Rick Young, in actuality, brings the dog with him to just about all the fires he goes out to, but a lot of those are not necessarily, because he's suspicious that accelerants were used and that's an arson scene. But there were two, two specific fires that he was used to check for accelerants, and he had three calls for explosives investigations. Now, in 2008, he had a lot more. So I think we've sort of seen that at some point, the dog is going to be phased out. And so I think some of the jurisdictions are probably cutting back a little bit on their requests from us. Littleton Public Schools, LPS, is probably one of the largest users of the canine. And so I think some of the jurisdictions are probably cutting back a little bit on their request from us. Little Papa Schools, LPS, is probably one of the largest users of the canine. Just about every April 19th, he's checking all the schools in Littleton. When Vice President Biden's wife was out at a Rappelhoop Community College, the dog went through the college prior to her visit. So you can think of it as a fire dog, but in actuality, about half the work it does is with the police and/or service departments. So it will be missed there. It'll probably be missed more on the explosive side than what it will be missed on the accelerant side for the fire department.
Any other questions for the chief?
Jose?
Yeah, John, I would like to, for you to explain to the general public on television here, because they always ask me about the response that you do at nursing homes. You're rolling a paramedic truck, then you roll a truck with it, very fire truck. And they've always said, you know, that's an awful waste of gas to send that huge truck along with the paramedic truck. I don't know what the problems might be in there, but apparently, from what I gather, they do not allow their people to pick up anybody that's fallen down. You know, it's like a patient there. I don't know if that's true. I've been to some where they pick them up. But it just seems to me, in trying to answer their questions, that yes, maybe we are using a lot of extra gas, a lot of extra manpower out of the houses. So could you give us a little bit of rundown on that? Approximately how many transports we make out of there, the nursing homes, as an example?
I can certainly take a shot at that. I don't know how many that we transport. I would think that we would, we transport the majority of the ones that need transport out of a nursing facility. But it's not just nursing facilities. It's any call, any medical call. We overcommit, and that's a fact. We find that very often, if it's a cardiac problem, that it takes more than two people to take care of, and there are only two people on that medic unit. The other reason we send a engine is right now, currently, all of our rigs are advanced life support. So no matter where those medic units or those engines are, the closest unit that arrives has advanced life support capabilities. But the short answer is, the reason we send two units is for staffing, just in case they need it. We've found that sending one unit, and then they get in trouble, and they're over their heads, and they need more help, there is a delay there in calling for that additional unit. So it's, yeah, we overcommit because of that. And I hope people don't see it as a waste of fuel. I can, I can see that perception. But yeah, when they're needed, yeah, we need them. Does that answer it?
Well, that's the short answer, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Appreciate it. Next, we have police department. If there's no more questions.
You didn't have one?
I've covered every possible question.
And a few improbable.
Difficulty to ask budget questions of anybody carrying a gun.
Thank you, fire team. Appreciate it.
You want to know how hot this is on a day like today?
Yeah, fair point.
Want to do an intro?
I don't. I'll just, Chief Coogan.
Okay, if you're ready, yeah, I would.
Sure.
And this is a pretty lengthy document, which I assume you've all been through. Just a couple of things that I'd like to bring up or point out. This was actually a really good exercise, because it gave us an opportunity to look at the entire department, and historically, to look at some of the things that we've done in the past, why we did them, and just evaluate, should we still be doing them, or is there a better efficiency? One thing that we felt pretty strongly about is if we identified something that we thought could be an efficiency or a savings, we couldn't see any reason not to do it now. So we went ahead and implemented that. I know you had that long discussion about budgeted versus next year versus reduction, but clearly, if we could identify something we could save money on, we said, let's do it. And rethink it or reorganize it now. I can't see any reason to wait for January to make that happen in the next budget cycle. So a couple of things I do want to point out to you that we have done, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions. As you recall, three years ago, when I started, I talked a lot about tools, technology, and training, that I saw that as the way of taking the department forward and addressing how to make us the very best department possible. So with that mirror of the department is how we evaluated the different things that we were looking at. That's kind of the key, you know, the tools to do the job, the proper training to make sure no one gets injured, and that we are at the highest standards. And then the tool in terms of not just the weapon, the gun, but also equipment that we might use and the technology to implement it. So along the way, we've bought the license plate readers. Those have been very effective. We used them on homicide recently, ran those through those parking lots, which was exactly what I told you, the kinds of uses we would see for that technology. So the technology has been developing over these last three years, and those are some of the efficiencies that I'm going to talk about that we identified. A couple of things I want to point out that are historical. The community outreach unit was created by council. There used to be a neighborhood policing unit, the, I think liaison, neighborhood liaison unit, and it became the community outreach unit. And that was how SET was born, which is special enforcement teams. And that's to address special crime issues in the community. That team is the, the team that we use to address anything that might come up where we need to put a resource on an event that's occurred, and get those resources in there right away, address something that's outside of the norm. Because we always have our core functions we have to address. We've always got to have patrol and investigations. That's the heart of what we do, is patrol and investigations. But of course, there are other things that come up that are clearly an impact on the safety of the community that we can't address with just those people on the street. At any given time, the staffing on the street is typically six people. That is not a lot of people in terms of a response in a city. So those six people have to be staffed at all times. So we've done some things like work with code enforcement, where we want to go in and address what might be happening. We certainly saw some issues come out of the homicide, and we're focusing efforts on that. So that's what we use SET for. But over the years, what's happened is that clearly, community policing is part of what makes Littleton really special, is our relationship with the community. And someone has to perform that. And SET has been pulled in two directions. One is addressing the crime issues and also addressing the community policing issues. And we've pulled them, those two directions. The traffic unit has been there for some time. The motor carrier position in the traffic unit was created by council to address what, at the time, was a very dangerous corridor through Santa Fe, where there were a number of injuries and deaths. And that's how that position originally came to exist. And just, a couple of things I do want to point out. The victim services unit, which responds to victims, that is paid for through a grant. And we currently have a part-time position that is open in the victim services unit that we have not filled, but we are working to fill that. And that's completely paid for by grant money, but it is open at the moment. If you saw on page three, the crime analysis position, this is something that we have come to address through better technology, that we purchased crimereports.com, actually, we contract with them. It's not a software that we own, it's a system. We pay $400 a month for that system, and it provides all of the crime information to the community, as well as a comprehensive management dashboard for us to analyze crime. It produces charts, reports, and it's instantaneous. So for $400 a month, it is doing a lot of the kind of crime analysis and data search that used to take an individual to pull a lot of information. Also, over the last three years, CopLink has come up. And CopLink provides the information to track individuals through the different counties, which is something we used to use our crime analyst for. We're able to now do mugshots, to do photo lineups, and the officer can actually do that at their desktop, through both CopLink. They can get to any of that information, where in the past, we didn't have that kind of expertise at the desk, and it now exists. So that's the reason why we're looking at the crime analyst position and thinking that there are some better efficiencies that can be done, instead of using a full-time FTE to do that. One pointing out to you, as I said, when we identify something that we think there may be a way to address it or to save some money, we've recently had two positions come open, two regular FTE police positions. In discussing it with the management team, we made the decision not to fill one position and to move it, to leave the lieutenant position vacant. That position typically is about $130,000, $135,000, which is a significant position. We have reorganized, and Commander Beckman has now moved, and we have three divisions, and he's in the administrative division. So he has taken over a lot of those duties that the lieutenant had, in addition to Kalia, and also overseeing training, the records bureau, the citizens academies. I think it's better dollars spent to keep those dollars in patrol and keep people on the street. As you recall, about, I think, two years ago, we discussed pipelining and putting in people, so we always had someone in the pipeline, we called it, in training and hiring, so that we could keep the streets staffed. Because what happens in the police department, when we have a vacancy, when there's not six people to fill that shift, we pay overtime to fill the shift. That's where a very large part of our overtime goes. So there really is no savings when the position's empty, because now we're paying time and a half to fill it. And it's that revolving door. Our overtime last year was approximately $400,000. So the pipeline position, two positions are something that we would like to continue, and I'd like to use that lieutenant salary to keep those going, because I think that we don't really save any money by paying time and a half to fill the positions, and we could keep that filled. But in speaking with Mr. Woods, we have not filled those pipeline positions, because we wanted to have an opportunity to discuss this with council and to make a decision about where we're going. In the law enforcement field, if you hire someone and then they later have to be laid off, there are not a lot of jobs out there, and there are not an increase in law enforcement jobs in the metro area at this time. So I want to be very careful.
There's also a huge investment in the, in the whole recruiting process to get quality people. And I think I have had a conversation with a couple of council people. You know, there's sort of this impression, well, geez, unemployment is high, and you ought to have people beating down your door and all that kind of stuff. But finding the right person with the right temperament, with the right profile, with the right non-criminal record is a challenge. So, so that upfront recruiting and that upfront quality screening, that is also a big investment. So again, there's a reluctance, a caution about going ahead and hiring if, in fact, six months later, there's a possibility we might be laying off. So that's, again, part of, because that's a big time investment on the part of the, both HR and the department to go out. We invest a lot of time in this department in trying to recruit quality people, so that's another factor.
And we do feel strongly that we have a very high-quality police department. Very proud of that. In looking through the document on page four, just pointing out, looking at our overtime, we have overtime that is spent within the budget. We identify different categories of overtime. There is overtime that we spend for city-sponsored events, overtime in staffing private events, and then the overtime that goes for police community items. That's all outside of our overtime for actual patrol issues. So for council's consideration, we would suggest looking at charging private vendors where we provide police services for our overtime. And then the city-sponsored event, which would be Candlelight Walk, we think is appropriate, and we wouldn't suggest eliminating that. That's very powerful. And then within the police department, we have some community policing events that we participate in that have pretty small attendance, that we think we could eliminate those costs. When you look at the overtime budget, it's not always just the dollars spent that day for a police officer to show up. Some of the events have a lot of preparation time involved and take a lot of hours for us to put that event on. So when you look at the event, different events are fairly easy, some of them are very labor-intensive. That labor comes from typically the SET team, which means that they are not addressing the crime issues, because they're involved in the planning of these community events. So going to page six, I'd just like to go kind of through the summary of some of the things that we have done, and then answer any questions that you have. The first bullet point, of course, addresses this issue of overtime, that if we're, have a vacancy, then we have to pay time and a half to fill it. We're aggressively managing our training schedule. We have changed the policy, and we are not sending anyone to any kind of training that does not involve certifications or mandatory training. And we are managing those costs. Looking at the numbers, we've already reduced our training costs this year, over last year's training costs. We are managing our fleet by moving the cars around to keep the mileage equal, so that we can extend the life of the vehicles as long as possible. We have eliminated three computer workstation's and the T-line costs that go along with those computer stations.
Chief, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I didn't think of this when I, when I read this last night, but when you just said it, it came to my mind. Let's say you have 36 cars. I know you have more, but let's just say you have 36. So if you rotate them and so forth to try to extend the life, aren't you going to have all of them dying at the same time?
Well, if every car was purchased at the very same time. But some, some vehicles tend to get more mileage or less mileage, or we're looking at why the mileage. In patrol, it's fairly consistent, because they're in those cars 24/7, driving them, and we have overlap shifts. So a vehicle may sit, because it's not an overlap vehicle, and so then we'll rotate it in, so that they're, that they're getting that. I have to tell you, Alan watches it very closely.
Okay, I mean, as long as he's on top of it, then I'm totally comfortable.
But the same thing with the detective vehicles. We just transferred all the detective vehicles around. So if you had this car and you're getting more mileage than someone else, we moved it over. Commander Beckman, we just traded cars between all of the commanders, so that we would even out that mileage, so that one doesn't burn out necessarily sooner. But I'll tell you that Alan watches that.
Okay, it's okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
The IT, we have eliminated 11 computers in going through that. As I mentioned earlier, we reorganized some of the duties under Commander Beckman. And we have, one thing that we put was the parking enforcement officer, eliminating that salary. Those duties would be picked up by patrol to do parking enforcement downtown. Obviously, it would not be the same as having someone devoted 40 hours a week to writing parking tickets in the downtown area. And as I mentioned earlier, we believe that the crime analyst position could be more effectively replaced by the use of the technology we already have in place. effectively replaced by the use of the technology we already have in place. So those are some highlights.
Chief, one of the things that does bother me probably as much as anything is the parking enforcement officer downtown. Since we've got a breakfast with council and the downtown merchants on Thursday morning, I would really like that issue to be brought up and try to see what their reaction would be. I think that without having a person dedicated to doing that job, and your patrol is out doing the job that they're doing, they don't have time to come in and mark cars, let alone try to check it if it's been marked. And you'll find people will be parking for RTD, for whatever, for hours upon end in the downtown area. And I think it would be a real detriment to our merchants to have that position eliminated. But I would like to be brought up with them on Thursday morning.
And I agree with that, Jim.
I was actually going to ask it this way. Is it, would it be infeasible for legal reasons to, for example, if the patrol, parking patrol officer were eliminated, to see if you could get Citizens Academy volunteers to shift that? I mean, we use Citizens Academy people, for example, for Western Welcome Week parades and so forth and so on, as traffic control. And I don't know, this is a total brainstorming idea, but I mean, if you've got a group of people who are as dedicated as the Alumni Association is, and they were willing to do some of this, I'd hate to see, for the reason Jim identified as well, I'd hate to see patrol get stuck with having to do parking enforcement. But I, just sitting here thinking that Citizens Academy might be fired up to do it, because they consistently ask, what else can they do? I don't know.
Just a comment, I would see that as very problematic. Many of the Citizens Academy people, for instance, today it was 98 degrees. I think for many of them, it would be impossible. They have jobs, they have other obligations. I can't see it as being consistent. That is one of the huge issues with volunteers. And the Citizens Academy help us out tremendously, but it's always a very defined, very set period of time, and we are always very cognizant of never making it more than an hour or two, and certainly functioning in the heat or the snow and the ice.
Makes sense, I understand.
And I think there'd be a certain liability, certainly, if somebody fell on the ice while they were performing duties for the city. So I see that as problematic.
Okay, sure.
Looking on page eight, the $341,000 that you show is expenditure reduction, isn't really expenditure reduction. It's really partially expenditure reduction and partially new revenue, which really doesn't get us to a 3% cut in budgeted expenditures. And I realize you're almost 20 grand above what the 3% is, so that might almost equal out the reimbursement for private events, but increased revenue for line items listed really isn't an expenditure cut, it's really a revenue increase. And, you know, part of the reason that we're, the big picture is, part of the reason why we're doing this is because our expenditures cannot keep going up faster than what our revenue goes up. So I look at, what's the trends? What's causing us to spend faster than what we're really growing at? And, you know, our type-one offenses are down from '85 through 2009. They're down 34%. On the other hand, traffic is up. We have more people, and we do have a little bit of different composition of the community than we had before. But we had a smaller police department then, too. So I look at, what is it that we're doing now that we weren't doing 20 years ago? Why is it that we're spending that much more money now than what we were 20 or 25 years ago? Well, we didn't have a Wild on Littleton party, and that's, I think you show that as 4,000 is overtime expense. We didn't have officers in the schools. And part of the reason why officers in the schools are in the schools, frankly, is political. It's because the school board came to us after Columbine, and it felt like they had to do something, and they said that. We didn't have a motor carrier officer that specialized in doing trucks up and down the road. We didn't have Kalia certification. We didn't have a citizens police academy. We didn't have a safety day, all of which cost us overtime. So, you know, the question for me is, what's the value of these different programs or things that we're doing versus what are we getting and what can we afford to do? I, for one, am not all that concerned about heavy truck traffic going through Littleton. I haven't had anybody call me and say that there's a serious issue. I'm not aware of any disproportionate traffic accident data for trucks, although maybe there is some, and I'm just not aware of it. So if I had to make a choice between having an officer dedicated to a motor carrier or not, I would put that officer on regular duty and then take some of that lieutenant's salary out of the pipeline and use that as cost savings. I mean, if that were me. Or if parking enforcement is that important, then maybe taking a portion of that money and using it for parking enforcement. But we're doing more things now than what we were doing before. The question is, can we afford it, and does that get us to the goals that you state, which is community safety? So...
Well, I think you're right on the money in terms of the issues that you're raising, Doug, and that's, I mean, I think, and the chief said, we've talked about this. The chief's been here three years, and I, myself and the commanders have all been here 25 or plus. But in her introductory remarks, she pointed out that the set team, the neighborhood liaison team was initiated, was a council initiation.
It was.
They specifically requested that. The motor vehicle inspector program was council-initiated at that point in time, and the traffic unit, because, you know, that is coming from the community. So here we are, and so I think your voicing, saying if I have to choose a priority, my vote would be, you'd say I would perhaps vote for a parking enforcement officer over a motor traffic enforcement officer, or some other combination.
Jim might.
Well, but I'm saying, you know, that is, but that's why, you know, the value, if this council says, you know what, we look at those monthly stats, the motor carrier enforcement, yes, we can see how many trucks, how many violations are being issued, we can see how many trucks are being pulled out of service. At that particular point in time, when it was initiated, that council was very concerned about safety on Santa Fe and the number of trucks, because it's a heavily, heavily-used truck corridor. But if that data now, if this council says, that data's not very persuasive to us, or that's not a high priority for us, that's the kind of policy feedback we'll need to hear from you, and if you make those decisions. And so, I mean, that's exactly what this pre-budget dialogue is intended to bring out.
Well, we can't, I hesitate to say this after the phone call you got, but we can't, for instance, take on things like Wild on Littleton with, as an additional expense, with the revenues staying the same way that they are. We cannot continue to take on new tasks and new obligations when we have a flat revenue stream. Because when we do that, then we get out of balance. So if I had to pick, I would transfer the motor carrier into regular duty someplace. I would probably look strongly at the school resource officers. We need those. And I realize that they're one-half paid by the LPS, but we've got three of them, so we're paying one and a half.
That would be something I would want to bring information back, because what our experience has been, is that having the officer physically at the school reduces the number of calls for service. If we didn't have the officer there, and officers in regular patrol had to respond to the school every single time they had an event, I think that we would actually tax the street tremendously in terms of calls.
Okay.
Because they'll handle anywhere from six to 10 to 15 events a day. And if we had to send a car to each school every day that many times, so I would like to bring that information back to council. How many incidents do they handle a day? And is it more cost-effective to have them physically on-site versus sending a car there each time?
And let me just sort of put this in context, because, so the issue here would be, we will take all this data. My proposed budget that comes back to you may still have the motor carrier in there, but if it does, then what you've said to, what you've said is, I want to see your justification, and why is this still in here, rather than say, you don't want to know about the parking enforcement officer? So I think this is the kind of, and the same with the school resource officers. Now, we're prepared now to come back and say, here's why, whatever we do when we send this out to you in late August, here's why we made these recommendations, but we'll have the backup data, since we know council's going to be asking these questions in September.
Yeah, I guess I'm looking for your judgment on where you want to allocate the resources, but I am looking for a 3% reduction in expenditures. And I guess what I'm indicating is what I'm willing to give up to do that. And one of the things I think we're going to be forced to look at, to look at at some point in time, is combining police and fire dispatch.
Is, I'm sorry?
Combining police and fire dispatch. There are other cities that do that successfully. I think that that would probably result in a overall reduction in the combined personnel. I realize that would make Doug Furman's life a little more difficult in figuring how to cost that out, especially since we sell fire dispatch service, but it's probably worth the money.
Be worthwhile looking at, definitely.
Yeah. Jim?
And I'll just help complicate that a little bit, Doug, in that I think that when you look at the monthly reports that comes from the truck inspector, that they're removing an awful lot of safety problems off of Santa Fe that has 50,000 cars a day on it, and unsafe trucks getting removed, I think, is a benefit to the general traveling public.
Well, I see this argument as being very similar to the arguments that states that had and got rid of safety inspection programs for getting your car licensed or your car registration renewed. And it's almost the same argument. If it turns out that we're having accidents caused by mechanical failure on Santa Fe, as opposed to having accidents caused by driver causes, speeding, or failure to stop or something else like that, then there's probably a point for it safety-wise.
Sort of neat, I mean, it's sort of the absence of a negative, because, I mean, effectively, if we're not seeing anything, it's because they're doing a good job, maybe. But, I mean, essentially, you'd be...
Well, if you use that argument, it's impossible to cut anything.
No, well, no, but what I'm, definitely a prioritization, I understand. I mean, it's a little bit like the school resource officer issue, because, I mean, I think there is probably value there, and it's hard to weigh it out. It'd be interesting to see statistics if you've got jurisdictions with somewhat similar traffic patterns and no motor vehicle, and do they see an incremental increase in safety-related issues that maybe were taking off the streets?
Well, and part of it is a trade-off of what happens on Santa Fe versus what happens with, on the rest of Littleton. I mean, if you were to move that officer completely off Santa Fe or partially on Santa Fe, what would happen to the rest of Littleton if you did that? Because that's really what you're talking about. We have a finite amount of resources, and we have an almost infinite amount of problems.
And it's true, but I also remember at one point, and maybe it was during Citizens Academy, but somebody suggested that the word on the street for some of these guys that were driving rigs that aren't particularly roadworthy was to not, was to stay out of Littleton, because they knew somebody was paying attention. It's legitimate question in terms of, you know, what do we want to pay for?
I'm just not sure that if you're coming up from Sedalia, you don't have a whole bunch of choice on whether you're...
And I think that's a fair point. I mean, you're not going to drive...
Well, you could, if you want to go far enough out of the way.
Right.
It's possible.
Most of them don't want to do. But going back to your revenue question, though, I mean, is, I would sort of think both are in play. I mean, I don't have a problem with a 3% cut, but if there's loose change out there we should be picking up. Dollar, you know, money's money. Whether we do increase revenue versus cut expense, we should obviously cut expense within reason, and I think, I think this is a good document and a good exercise, identifying a variety of things, and I think a lot of, you know, thought process was put into this. But I'm not particularly opposed to budgeting a revenue increase either. You're saying you're not...
No, 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 I don't mind. If we're going to bring in new revenue, that's fine.
But it doesn't...
Well, if we go to public safety, for instance.
Right.
Sorry, public service, I'm getting the PS next up. You know, Charlie's coming to us with a pure, more or less, expenditure reduction. Charlie's not saying, you know, it costs me a whole bunch in overtime to cover Western Welcome Week, so I want to charge them for what I'm doing on Western Welcome Week. And that's a little bit of what's happening here on some of this stuff. And what's driving this is, for the recent past, we have been spending more money than we have been taking in. And we can do that for a while, but part of my concern was, taking $6 million of our reserve fund to fund the police expansion makes me more nervous about continuing that trend, waiting for the revenue to catch up. So I'm at a more nervous condition now than I would have been if we hadn't done that. But we would have to fix that one way or the other anyway, it's just how quick we would have to fix it.
Okay.
Peggy?
I have a minor question and then a big one. In terms of the traffic, the truck inspection, I keep forgetting to ask this when we get our monthly department reports. Why do we allow 30 days to remedy things that the report says the state allows only 15?
I do not know the answer to that.
It's more of a, and this is in direct, our local traffic.
Commander Brown, why don't you come up to the, let's repeat the question, because we want to get you on the mic, and then, so the TV people who are watching can sort of hear the question and then your response. Go ahead.
Do you want me to repeat?
Yeah, why don't you just...
So in our monthly department reports for the truck inspection, it says that she allows 30 days for whatever she stops people for, for them to fix it, but the state only allows 15 days.
The state does allow 15 days, or it can be set by whatever the agency wants. She has basically set that at 30 days, probably out of the convenience of some of the motoring traffic that comes through that's part of our community. She does follow up on all of them, and if they're not fixed within the 30 days, then she follows up with an additional, there's additional fines and stuff that do apply at that point. So all of those vehicles are followed up on.
No, I don't question their not being followed up. Of course, if they're just passing through, she's not going to be following up. But it would seem to me, going with the same rigor as the state might encourage fewer stops.
Quicker turnaround for having to do the follow-up, too.
Well, and the buzz gets out. You know, if you get stopped, you don't have all that much time to get something taken care of, so don't be coming through, you know.
I sometime, I somehow think we have an infinite supply of people to be stopped. I mean, I, we've been doing this for, what, a couple of years, a number of years?
Oh, 10, 10 at least.
You would think that if the enforcement was going to prevent the problem from happening, that the problem would have... from happening, that the problem would have slowly gone away.
Well, yeah, but there is the buzz, right? I mean, the word gets out. And Bruce and I were in the same police Citizens Academy. And yes, that is where we heard whoever was presenting that night, saying that at least some of the traffic goes, takes alternate routes, so they don't, they don't get, run the risk of getting stopped on.
And we'll put together, I hear Doug's questions, I want to kind of go back and maybe we'll look at the history of the program. You know, part of it might be, we didn't eliminate, but we kept it from getting worse. And so it's kind of, I would also say, looking at the circumstances, and maybe, and we can go back and revisit this, but that, the council at that time, the amount of traffic that was on Santa Fe, the fact that we have two mobile home parks on Santa Fe with a very high percentage of elderly people, just sort of, and a lot of, it's not like you're on I-70. I mean, we have, if you look at all the curb cuts, we have a lot of traffic coming in and out of Santa Fe. And so that kind of combination, and I, again, I can't point chapter and verse, where did a truck do something? But I mean, I know at that point in time, those truck violations, when we first started it, we had participation from Sheridan and Inglewood. And there were times, in fact, the state was actually participating originally. They would, the state would come up with their scales and would participate. That got cut back because of budget cuts. But on the days that they were, we used to have them, we'd pull them over and have the way stations. And I know that Inglewood, and I mean, they were chasing truckers, they were hearing about it, and they were doing loops and going all around and that kind of stuff. So part of it, we'll put together a little bit more.
There was a period of time when we were having a bunch of fatalities on Santa Fe.
There was, yeah. You know, and since that time, we got the improvements. We also now, I'm told, although Charlie keeps, whenever I ask him, he says, I'll tell you when. But the, we're supposed to have a concrete median that CDOT is going to put from about the seminary down to, I think, to County, County Line Road? Am I right about that? Because we had a very, we had a very, very serious accident, what, about two or three months ago?
A head-on crash?
Yes.
Yeah, head-on crash, just about where Santa Fe sand and gravel is. And somebody at CDOT, you know, because it's their road.
Yeah.
But we've been told that they've, somebody's pulled the trigger, made a budget decision. We are going to get a concrete median in there. So we, you know, it's fair, it's a fair question to say, go back and evaluate, and are we still, is that still a good investment?
Well, that answers the question my wife asked me a couple of days ago. And that is, do we, did we have any more, since we've widened the median, have we had any more head-on accidents on Santa Fe? And I guess the answer is yes.
We did, yeah. We went for a pretty impressive stretch of time without one. And but this one, and I haven't, I didn't read the accident reports, I'm not sure what all happened there. But somebody crossed over and it was, it was a big, it was a big mess. But it certainly reduced significantly those head-ons. So, yes, sir.
Since we're on this topic of that median barrier, I've been intending to ask Charlie anyway, if he could convince CDOT to go with those cable systems to divide the highway. Those concrete barriers are the ugliest thing in the world. And no longer they came, wonder they came from the East Coast. But the cable system.
This, this project just sort of materialized for me. So I don't know how far down the road it is. I don't know if it's stimulus money. I don't know what it is. I just know he said the barriers are coming. But I can, we can certainly check and find out, Jim. I was, thought it was going to be underway like this month. But I don't know, maybe I'm not in the loop.
We have an early thing from Charlie.
No. Yeah. I mean, anyway, we kind of diverted there. But I think the history going back, and we'll give you a little bit more history on how, on the motor carrier. And maybe it is time to take a fresh look at that. But certainly, I think if you, well, like I said, that council was, it was not just the absolute stats, but it was that population that travels Santa Fe, too, was a big factor in their thinking.
Bruce, and then Peggy?
Well, I have my other question.
Peggy, and then Bruce.
All right. I did email today five questions, copy to all of council and Mr. Woods, to the police department. Unless it came really late this afternoon, I didn't receive answer. And I don't know that you can lay out the answers, because some of these are rather extensive data questions. But did you, you got this, chief, right? So I don't know if council wants answers to those tonight, or would you just like to have them by, by email?
Email's fine with me.
Me, too.
Okay.
Sure.
Takes a little bit of research to do some of those, I think.
Yeah, well, then, I figured that. But, you know, I do.
I do have the information if you want it.
Or do you have copies, maybe, for everybody or something? Anyway, so just for the public, so you know, I had a question regarding training for personnel and whether they receive overtime and so forth, and overtime costs, question about accreditation, reaccreditation expenses, question about Citizens Academy with the new facility with such a large training room, whether we might have just one, one training a year to save the overtime costs involved with that. And then a question about officer response, a little bit, Jose maybe touching on what you asked the fire folks. Some people have told me that they see, for rather routine incidents, if you will, three, four, even more officers responding to something that, from their perspective, is, doesn't really need that. And that involves, obviously, extra fuel for people to come from several different places to arrive at a place that may or may not need it. And so my, my question was, in terms of the report, that said that officers are at liberty to respond, they make the decision. And I wondered if there's any other decision factor involved when they respond.
Did you want me to answer that?
Whatever. That one, perhaps, and several people had commented to me on that one.
Go ahead, chief.
The response to a call, while to the public, they may not understand why the officers came, information is being gathered. If you looked in the report when we respond, the dispatcher is acquiring information. There are standards as to how many people we send. Clearly, if we had a burglary in progress, that's how the call comes in. The public doesn't know what information we have. We're not going to just send one officer. If an officer feels that they need additional cover, then they'll ask for it, and we're going to send two or three more officers. Typically, we only have six officers working, unless it's during the overlap. So it's a safety factor. By having a strong response, we reduce the need to use force. And there's a certain amount of psychological impact at additional cars. And clearly, you can see that because we don't have complaints of excessive force, we don't have injuries of officers, we don't have injuries of citizens. We want to get the appropriate amount of people there. If it's a crime in progress, we want a number of officers there so we can apprehend the suspect before they leave the area. And really, it's not knowing what the information is that we have at the time and where those officers might be. And dispatch, we have standards within dispatch about how many cars we're going to send for different types of calls. Anything, an accident on Santa Fe, that's not a one officer call. Because we have an accident on Santa Fe, especially if there are serious injuries, what it does to the traffic is unbelievable, especially at rush hour. So we're going to send additional cars so we can get the citizens moving again and the traffic moving again, and prevent any additional injury. Because clearly, you have one accident, everybody looks, and then we have another accident. Same thing with something going on at a home, a burglary call, whatever that might be. So I know to the citizen who says, why did all these officers come? They typically don't have the picture about what that is. But when you look at our record, that we don't have officers injured, we don't have citizens injured. I think we are sending the appropriate amount on the calls. And oftentimes, we don't have officers available to respond when we would like to send more.
And I know in at least a couple instances of, that people talk to me about, it might have been just a little bit of noise at a house, you know, a minor, really indeed minor, not along the lines of what you're saying. And, you know, I don't have all those facts, but I knew, I do know a couple of those instances specifically, people seemed to have that information. It wasn't burglary, it wasn't a fight, it wasn't anything other than just the most minor kind of thing, even, even in the onset of it, and the, and the whole part. And so that was, I just figured that's a good one to ask for clarification for people to hear. So thank you.
So for the other, more data oriented, the rest of council's satisfied to have the chief just email the responses that, from Dr. Cole, she had some others about training cost, overtime cost. Is council, other council members satisfied with that? Is that okay with you, Dr. Cole?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Bruce?
Oh, yeah. I was going to ask, and I neglected to ask this on the fire, fire rescue side, but saying, I think it's applicable to both, and there was some communication or conversation about this. The issue of looking at opportunities for grant money to fund some of this stuff, I mean, typically, these aren't long-term commitments. But on the other hand, if there's a grant that's out there that we can put in for, are we looking at this stuff somewhat actively? Or is it something, what's, I guess, what's on the stove at this point in time?
Well, and I think if you look in the document, we talked about grant monies that we spend out of our overtime budget, go into the general fund. It was $57,000 last year. And I have this year's already, I think we're close to $48,000 already this year in grant money that we've brought in. We have the CAT-Pod grant that Commander Beckman worked on, I believe, about $100,000 in grant money to address auto theft issues.
Right, okay.
So we're looking at that constantly. We just applied with FIRE for tri-county health that we're doing together with them. That was another $15,000. We receive information on a regular basis about grants that are out there. And Commander Beckman, that's been put into his job duties to regularly apply for all grant funds that are available. And it keeps us current with what's going on. And by sharing resources, the CAT-Pod grant, actually, we share resources with Sheridan and Inglewood, it gives us a chance to get the most efficiencies out of the money.
Good.
By the departments working together. And clearly, auto thieves are going to go down Santa Fe from Littleton to Inglewood, Sheridan. So we want to catch them in that.
Good. And I, same question, I mean, obviously, you go to fire rescue, and I'm assuming they are doing something similar. Yeah, we continue, and on the granting agencies also, there's a email distribution that keeps us posted on those. So we're constantly scanning those. The ones that we're more cautious about are the federal grants, where there's some obligation on our part to then pick it, pick up costs down the road. Right. So that's probably the biggest caution that we do. But the ones that the chief's talking about are really more opportunistic grants.
Good, okay. And I guess if there's no more questions, I want to clarify two things. And that is, if you're doing overtime directly because of a grant that's specific to that particular type of overtime, and I realize that the feds and the state sometimes will say, we're going to give you $40,000 to do seatbelt enforcement for two weekends or something, I don't mind offsetting that expenditure, that overtime expenditure with that specific grant. I mean, having it go into the grants as revenue rather than the general fund, I don't mind doing that. If that's something that we weren't going to be doing absent that specific grant money that comes in, does that make sense?
Yes. And we have those specifically CAT-Pod, the DUI grants, HEAT is on, and we have an accounting we have to do to the state for every one of those dollars.
Okay. Because I, I mean, I realize that you guys are in a very different category from the other departments because of that. And the other thing I want to clarify is, I don't want to leave anybody with the impression that we're doing the 3% expenditure reductions because of the $6 million police expansion. We aren't. We are doing the 3% budget expenditure reductions because of the economy and the situation that we're in. I feel personally motivated to speed that process up because of my worry about how much money we carry in reserves. But we would be doing this anyway, regardless of doing the police expansion or not. So I didn't want to leave anybody with the impression that.
Good point.
That we're doing this for all the departments because, because we've got a police building coming online.
That's a good, very good point.
And I wanted to clarify one item. In, on page seven, the in-car video, in the 2010 budget identifies $55,000, which was half of the cost of it. Presumably, there'd be another $55,000. We believe that we could eliminate that item. We would not purchase that. That's a capital item, the $110,000. In discussing where we are and the fact that we don't have complaints, that we, the quality of the policing, I just don't think that we need to spend the money on that item. So, and it says in here, we realize it's a one-time savings we need to replace. That's an incorrect statement. We just simply wouldn't purchase it in the future.
Any other questions for the chief? Thank you very much.
Okay. Counsel, just to remind you, and Mr. Taylor already did, but you do have breakfast.
That this Thursday?
Thursday, yeah. Yes, sir.
Okay.
This Thursday. And I think Marlene told me this morning, we had about 22 to 23 RSVPs, so pretty good turnout. So, just so you don't forget.
We have, we have a reception tomorrow night, tomorrow afternoon at Hampton.
Oh.
At 3:00. At least some of us.
Yep. For those of you who can get down there, yeah, it'd be nice.
So.
Okay. Police team, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, thank you. Commanders, appreciate your. We do like an executive session for all. Our counsel, there's no more business, we are retired. Suggesting we need an executive session.